Welcome to the Board Wrap-Up Show. I'm your host, Shawn Anderson for Ponca City Public Schools. And this is our monthly sit-down visit with Superintendent Shelley Arret as we go over this month's board meeting. It's July, middle of summer, and a lot of things happening. Ponca City Public Schools moving right along and doing what they do in the summer. And it's a lot of work and personnel changes and there's a lot of them. Superintendent Arret, the superintendent's report, the board meeting started out with this report, and it's a pretty big report.
That's right. And you mentioned that we're in the middle of summer. You know, we're just less than a month away from the first day of school.
Wow.
I don't know how it flies by so quickly, but it does.
We're a little past the halfway point.
That is exactly right. And many people say to me, "Oh, I bet you're glad school's out and you can kind of slow down a little bit during the summer." We are just as busy in the summer. It's just a different type of work. So we're preparing for the next school year. And yes, the superintendent's report was basically an update on personnel where we are specifically with Ponca City Public Schools and a little update on the severe teacher shortage crises in the state of Oklahoma. And I'm sure you and our viewers know, we've, there are legislators have done a great job of adding additional funding to schools. And people will say, "Well, the teachers got a raise and there's more revenue." You're just going to be able to hire teachers left and right. People are going to come back into it. Not the case. In fact, statistics have gotten worse instead of better. And I'll talk to you a little bit about that. State agencies, Oklahoma School Boards Association started tracking the severe teacher shortage crises in 2014. And here's some information we know since we've started tracking the teacher shortage crises. The crises and the shortage was decades in the making. I mean, it just didn't happen overnight. We've had revenue cuts and increased growth in population for the last 10 to 15 years. And the result of that is we've had, we've cut positions. We have cut many positions here in Ponca City over the last 15 years, which resulted in large class sizes. A lot of schools had to deal with insufficient resources. That's not been an issue with Ponca City Public Schools. Our money's been managed well the last 20-plus years. So we do have a lot of resources, but some schools have faced that. And I will have to say, because of this crisis and because of the shortage, we have to thank the people of Oklahoma with degrees who have stepped up to become emergency certified. Now, we can get someone emergency certified as long as they have a bachelor's degree. But have you ever subbed in a classroom or anything, Shawn?
I have not.
But your daughter's a teacher, so you know.
Absolutely.
You just don't come into a classroom and kids sit down and get started on their work, especially little ones or even bigger ones for that matter. But it's been a hardship on those people. They, they may know their content, but they don't have the management and the procedures and that kind of thing down. So we have to thank our people for stepping up and taking this role. And on the flip side, we have to thank our current teachers for being mentors and our administrators. Without a doubt, the skills of the teacher happens to make the biggest impact on student achievement. But we're in a position that we've got to train our teachers to manage classrooms, our emergency certified teachers. So we, lots of people to thank for this crises. And when actually we started tracking, or the state School Board Association started tracking in 2014, probably even though the emergency certificate numbers were staggering, they were probably under-inflated because at the same time, we're cutting positions. So we're not filling those positions. And rebuilding the teacher pipeline is going to be a slow process. The crises didn't happen overnight. It's not going to correct itself overnight. It's years in the making. A lot of people, like I mentioned, you just probably are going to have all kinds of teachers. You can start restoring class sizes. Well, we've got new money and it's fabulous and I'm so appreciative, but it's like a no-win situation. We, yes, can restore some positions, but unless you're a hiring manager for a school, the crises is, is
Ongoing.
real. It is ongoing. So just to give you a little bit of input.
Yeah, I'm curious, is there at least a trend in leaning in a, in a, in a positive direction for this?
Nope. The trend has gone up. As a matter of fact, and I'm not going to go way back in years. I'll give you some statistics, but last year in June, the state board has to approve the emergency certificates. Last year in June, the state board meets the last Thursday of every month at noon. Last year in June, they approved 384 emergency certificates in June alone. And that's going to be a high month because that's when people are trying to get their, schools are trying to get their teachers placed. For the entire year last year, there were 3,038 emergency certificates approved across the state of Oklahoma.
Now, if you compare that to, say, 2013, 14, if you go back there,
I'll share that with you.
What kind of a difference are we talking about?
In the entire school year of 2013, 2014, 189 in the entire state.
Wow.
I was the HR director before I came, became superintendent. And I remember we needed an emergency certificate. And it wasn't because we didn't have an applicant. It was because we had an elementary teacher who we were moving to early childhood or kindergarten, and they needed early childhood certification. And it was active Congress, lots of paperwork, and we got it done. Now it's a push of a button. So it is staggering. But in June, this just last June, last year, 384. This past June, 818.
Wow.
So more than double. Okay, so some of that is inflated because there were second-year emergencies approved, but it did not decrease. Just to give you an indication across the state, and I told you what, 1314, what was 189. It went up to 505, 1,063, 1,160, 1,975, 3,038. And in June alone of this year, we don't have this year's data.
Right.
Nearly 900. Now.
So about a 1,500% increase.
A huge increase. And the reason is, we've got to get these people interested in going into education. Get them through college. Hey, I am talking to freshmen and sophomores in college, you know, who have two or three more years. I want you to do your student teaching with us, you know. So we are actually, no more graduates. We're, we're working toward education students.
Recruitment. Recruitment. I mean, it's almost like you're, you're a coach now. You gotta go out and recruit.
Exactly right. And I'm going to tell you where we are in Ponca City alone. So the total number of emergency certificates that we have in our district, and I will tell you, we have 351 certified people. Not all those are teachers. Some are principals, some are counselors. But of our teaching staff, we have 33 with emergency certificates. That's about 10% of our teachers. So of those total emergency certificates, 13 are in our elementary schools. Now, the good news is, sometimes they are educationally trained, but we need them certified in like special ed, or they have a special ed certificate and we need them in a classroom. Out of those 12, five are education majors. So they have been trained as an education student. That means that 58% of those 12 emergencies, non-education degrees. And they've done a great job for us, but they've had to work extra hard because they don't have that background of doing student teaching, being in the classroom, observing, that kind of thing. At the secondary level, we have 21 teachers who have emergency certificates. And that's, it's higher than elementary, and that's not surprising. Out of those 21, only four have an education degree. Now, that's not surprising to me. Let's say we have a math major. They're going to know the content of math, but they, they are not a math education major. So still, they haven't had the opportunity to be a, a student teacher. They've had to work extra hard. They've had a lot of support. And of those, well, I mentioned, of those 21, only four have an education degree. And they're teaching outside. Like maybe, maybe they have a degree in science, but they're teaching ELA, English Language Arts. So that means that 81% of our 21 secondary teachers do not have an education background. So gives you a little perspective where we are. Of those 33, we have 16 new hires on first-year emergency. We have 17 that we applied for, for the second-year emergency. Now, the state won't let you do a third-year emergency unless the teacher has gotten the course hours or made some progress on their proficiency testing. Now, the only way the state is, is approving third-year emergencies is, is if the teacher has made progress, passed some proficiency tests, gotten some coursework done. We, we don't have anyone on a third-year certificate. We would have had a teacher that we wouldn't have been able to bring back because this teacher had made, had not made progress. So we could have been in a bind. This teacher resigned and went into another area. So it's tough, is basically the point of this story.
Do you, do you use some of the, there's a lot of people that have been substitute teachers for many years. They do it every year. Have you been able to
We have.
use some of those substitutes and transition them into a more full-time situation?
If they have a degree. We cannot get emergency certification
Without.
without a bachelor's degree. So we're encouraging our subs that have got some credit hours or that really are naturals in the classroom, working with our, our partner universities, the University Center, NOC. Let's send them back to school, get a bachelor's degree, or even they could go into education if that's their forte.
Right.
So yes, we have.
Do, now somebody's watching this right now. They have a bachelor's degree. They're thinking, you know, maybe this would be a, a career move. Now is really the best time for them if they want to make this transition. And what, what do you recommend to help them prepare for?
Come see us. We can talk to them about their qualifications. We would help them get emergency certified. Obviously, they would have to apply for a position. And we have changed the way we operate in the district. We now have an induction process. So if a teacher, I don't care if they're emergency or not, if they're first year, second year, third year, we do an induction process where we meet with them once a month and go over things like management, bring in, bring in trainers, provide that additional support. They have a mentor for three years. It used to be they had a mentor for their first year.
Right.
But now we're providing that extra
Oh, that's wonderful.
tool. So if anyone is interested, we can help you and we are going to support you. We are not going to just put our teachers in a classroom and say, "Here you go." Because the teacher makes the biggest impact on student achievement. And it's important to us that our teachers are trained. And in our, we've had some great emergency certification hires, but they're lacking that student teaching and observation time.
Experience.
Experience, experience.
Yeah, there's just no replacing that, right?
That is right. That's right. But you know, I am thankful for our teachers, for our people in the community and surrounding areas who have a degree, who have stepped up for our kids and all over Oklahoma. Or their flat wouldn't be teachers in the classroom. That's how severe the crises is.
Yeah, a much worse situation. Well, the superintendent's report took a large portion of the July Board of Education meeting. And that was a, a, a big topic. What else from your report was, was important?
Okay.
It's all important, but.
Well, I, I gave the board an update of where we are with our status in hiring positions and what we still need to fill. And since that was Monday night, we've even got an updated version here because we have done some, things have happened in the last two days. Hey, 10 minutes, things change in schools. So as of today, we have hired 54 new employees.
Wow.
Six of those are restored positions. I was prepared to restore eight positions. Two, we just don't have the staffing. We couldn't leave a classroom empty. We are adding four cores back to West. We had cut a team at West previously when revenue was, we'd had several revenue failures. We had 29, 30 kids in a class. It needed to be done. We added some electives at Ponca City High School. And then we've got a five-year plan on balancing our class size at the elementaries. We have actually reduced our limits for this next year at the elementary schools. So I want to take this time to any viewers out there who have not registered at 111 West Grand. Register, enroll to ensure their elementary kids get a spot at their home elementary site. But we're really working to reduce that class size. Here are the positions that we still need. We need a keyboarding teacher at West Middle School, a PE teacher at Union. And we would like for this person to be able to help us out with coaching. We need some coaching in high school basketball, both boys and girls. Wrestling, we need some junior high coaches. We have a candidate hired. We're going to put in one of those positions. It depends on who we're able to hire for the other position. And we do have an offer on the table. Something new that happened at the board meeting, Saturday before the meeting, after the agenda had already been posted, we received a resignation from our strength and conditioning coach, Garrett Bay left. You know Garrett?
Yeah.
That hurt. He, 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 he was fabulous. And you know, we had just added that position last year with our new strength and conditioning facility. And, and we are tracking data on how much muscle mass our students have, have gained.
Incredible.
It's incredible. And he took a job in Wichita State. He played baseball there. He's going to be the lead strength and conditioning coach. You can't fault him for that. We are going to miss him. But fortunately, we have a great connection with Oklahoma State University and Rob Glass.
Yes.
And.
If anyone knows of a candidate, that would be perfect. It would be Rob Glass.
And we have them. And we hired. We did it under New Business. His name is Antonio Folks. And he actually starts this coming Monday. We're super happy to have him. It is just, it worked out. Just wonder, we're going to miss Garrett, but we're certainly thankful to have Antonio. And I am just thankful for our students.
That happened so quickly.
It did.
Was it just a, was it a phone call? Was it a text? "Hey, Rob, do you know anybody?" Boom. That was that.
Yes.
Yeah. Wow.
Yes. And then, then he came down and we don't let the grass grow under our feet because we don't want to lose any candidates. Something new that was not shared at the board meeting, we need a principal at Liberty as of less than 24 hours ago.
Wow.
So Jennifer Martinez resigned and she is going to be moving to Texas. Our principals start two weeks from tomorrow. So we are moving rapidly at this point because that will have to be filled. We need an elementary special ed teacher. And wish us luck. Stranger things have happened. There are some things that we can do. We've got some, we've got some information. We've got some leads on some candidates. And I didn't share this earlier, but the one area that a person cannot be emergency certified in is special ed. So we could take an educationally trained teacher and have them set for the certification for special ed. But, but we've got some plans.
Yeah.
Okay?
Good.
Then we need a speech-language pathologist or a speech-language pathologist assistance. And schools are having to contract with these folks. They're just not out there that work for this school.
And that's expensive for the school district.
Very. But, but you know, it's a service, it's a service that our, our kids need and must be provided. So there's where we are as of this 10 seconds. Now, do you want some more data? It's kind of interesting or no?
Well, I mean, let's talk, let's talk charter schools and the effect that that has had on the public school system.
Okay, so last year, the first year I was superintendent, I wanted, I wanted to maintain staff. I did not want to lose staff. So after last year, my first year, we lost 12 career teachers. That means they've been hired a fourth time and, which is that experience to either area schools or a virtual charter school. We can't lose 12 in this time of crises. So we have set goals on ways to not lose that many. The 12 we lost, nine of those went to area schools that are on a four-day week or have really low class sizes. So that's the push.
Has, has the big challenge with this been that the, the, the playing field hasn't been, even the rules are, haven't been the same for charter and public?
Yes, but that changed, you know, as of July 1, new legislation.
Okay, good, good.
You know, exactly. And I, Bill Coleman and Ken Latrell, I know you got tired of listening to me, but thank you.
Yes.
You know, and, and, and I just, it, it's fine. I don't have anything against the virtual charter schools, but level the playing field for all of us. If they're a public school, then, and receive public school dollars, they need to follow the same accreditation and the same auditing process. And so nine of those went to area schools, three to Epic. I say virtual charters, but we didn't lose to another one. Then we put a lot of things in place and we set some goals and did some things to maintain our staff. After this year, we only lost nine to area schools or to Epic. Five of those went to area schools. And I will say, out of those five, two of them went to the Stillwater area because they were driving here anyway. Can't blame them for that.
Right, sure.
A, a few more went to a four-day week and the 10 and 12 class size. We lost four to Epic this year. We lost one more to Epic this year. But the best data of all of this information,
Yes.
the 12 that we lost after my first year, four of those came back to us this year.
Fantastic. Wow.
Gave me two bumps. I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Good timing.
That's awesome. Well, they wanted to come back, you know. Sometimes you just, if you've never been anywhere else, you just have to get out and see what's out there.
Sure.
They wanted to come back to us. So one thing that we're big on is collecting this quantitative data, qualitative data on why people want to come back, why they leave. We just ask them. So here are the factors that we, we talked to both our support and our certified. Why are you choosing to stay with PCPS? Why did you choose to return? Why are you leaving? Here are the factors considered for staying employed with or returning to PCPS. Our continued board interest in raising the certified salary schedule and the support salary schedule. Reduction in contract days. And I'm sure we talked about this at one of our board wrap-ups, but we had 185 contract days. So I did some studies of area schools. The next closest to us was 180. There were two schools that had 180. And you know, they were getting paid same. We reduced our contract to 180 days. So that was a big deciding factor.
Sure.
So we're no longer five days above everybody in our area. And here's a little story about that. Those two that were 180 that we now met, when we went to 180, they dropped to 178. So we're still the highest, but hey, not by five days.
Right.
But our staff appreciated that.
Sure.
Our efforts to reduce class size, our five-year plan on elementary setting limits. It wasn't right that we had 14 in a kindergarten class over here and 28 in a kindergarten class across town.
Right.
That's hard on teachers. We can, we want to put our kids in our home, in the home schools, but we, we need to have a balance.
That's taken a, a plan that you've really had to map out.
We, we've worked, we've worked hard on that.
A lot of intentional actions.
Changed some policies on transfers.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing. Another thing that our factor, that our people are saying, just the support of our employees. And, and you know this from your daughter, the professional development opportunities that we bring in. We work with our teachers. We hire experts to come in. We have a professional development day once a month. We send our people to professional development if, if we want our people to grow. We want to give them that support. Their liking that we are making the effort to restore previously cut positions. As you remember, the forgiving of snow days. We forgave two snow days this year. Our employees really appreciated that, that we didn't have to do the makeup on that. And we were able to do that because of our hours today's, our team culture. Last year, we did the back-to-school assemblies, bought all of our staff, not out-of-state money. Let's get that clear. It was a private donor, bought the Team PCPS t-shirts for everybody. Our people wear them every Friday. We're all Wildcats now.
Yeah.
It, it's just not so much, we're all in this together.
Right.
So people say that. They say coming in and telling us, "Thank you and what a good job you're doing," knowing their name, about their families. We, a family atmosphere. So that's what our people are telling us of why they're returning or why they're staying.
It's a wonderful story. I mean, the whole, the whole, it's a wonderful story of rising above through exceptional and difficult circumstances.
That's right.
And it's just remarkable how.
And you know, you know, Shawn, everything, everything that I mentioned, other than, you know, the efforts to increase money, and that's been state mandated, but the highest thing, it, everything goes back to relationships. You think about your favorite teachers. You might not remember what they taught you, but you know who had that positive relationship with you.
Never forget them, ever. Yeah, that's very true.
So that, that's some data. And then I, then I gave some info about our new Wildcat Way class. Do you want to hear a little bit about that?
I do. I'm very excited about the Wildcat Way.
I'm super excited about it. I, I just kind of felt like that we just sent our freshmen to the high school with not, without an orientation.
Yeah.
And Mr. Dilbeck and I talked about this, this past year of goals. And he said, "I've got this idea." And I think it was awesome. When you go to college, you have freshman orientation. So all of our freshmen are going to be required to take a course, the Wildcat Way, first semester.
Oh, I love this.
Second semester is going to be Oklahoma history, which is required for freshmen. But here, here's what we'll do. We are going to do an orientation of the school. We're going to do campus tours. There are rooms in the high school that I just have been in recently, you know, basement. We're just, it's a huge, it's a sprawling campus.
Sure.
So here's where the cafeteria is. Here's where the bathrooms are. Here's, here's where we do pep assemblies, that kind of thing. Introduce them to personnel. They have, they have principals, assistant principals assigned to them by their last name. So that the principal will stay with them until they graduate. Counselors, same way. These are SROs. These are lunch people. I mean, they, they really just don't know that. I mean, and how, how could you? It's, it's huge.
Yeah. And you're giving these new students this incredible support. They're just pillars for their success.
Here's what I love too. One day a week, we're going to do personal financial literacy. We have that course, but it's an elective. Kids don't have to take it. Now our freshmen will have to take it. Hey, they get to pick a job. Here's how mu, here's the average salary. We're going to have them balance checkbook, purchase interest. Hey, what, what size home could you purchase? Or what amount could you afford to pay for a house payment, a car payment, insurance? So that's going to be one day a week. Then we're going to do some uninterrupted reading time. Before there is an impact on reading, you have to practice. Anything you do, you have to practice. And I'm not talking about comprehension skills or phonics skills. Practice reading. And they say that everyone should read for pleasure 15 minutes a day or there's not going to be progress. The average number of minutes that a school-aged child reads is less than five. Okay, so think about this, is what I told our principals. What if our football players practice five minutes a day?
Yeah, that's a good point.
What if our national champion Pohai Steppers practice five minutes a day? They go win at 6:30 every morning. There's a reason they're the national champions.
True.
So we're going to do some uninterrupted reading time in Wildcat Way, but that's going to be initiative across the district too. We're going to focus on study skills, how to be a successful Pohai student. If you're, if you're not where you need to be, how to reach out for tutoring. We're probably even going to start some Saturday School back.
Wonderful.
How to do credit recovery. We're going to talk to them about the clubs and organizations that they can participate. One of our goals when I became superintendent was to increase our percentage of students that were participating in extracurricular activity. And I'm not talking just about athletics. Spanish club, DECA.
Yeah.
You know, let them know what we have to offer.
Sure.
And then we're going to do Pohai history and traditions. You know, we do the Wildcat Battle Cry. A lot of times our freshmen don't even know what that is at our pep assemblies. So we're going to talk to them about that. We're going to talk to them about some of our successful Pohai graduates. You know, the people in our Ponca City High School Hall of Fame are incredible.
Yeah.
And then we're going to bring in guest speakers, the DA, our SROs. I'm scheduled for a day, the Chamber of Commerce.
Fantastic.
So I am super excited about the Wildcat Way course for our freshmen.
Well, taking it from a, a set of, a code of ethics, you know, some principles to, to help a student through their academic career at Pohai and turning it into a course, it just
Required.
makes a required course.
They're going to love it. It's going to be fun, too. They're going to be phenomenal.
This is good. This is great.
It's exciting. It's exciting.
Well, the meeting continued, and it was a fairly, was it, would you say it was a longer board meeting for July?
Lots of contracts, you know, I can't even tell you the number of contracts that we have in a given school year. It's numerous. But some that are notable that we did, um, we did contracts, I'm skipping down a little bit. We hired, we we went under contract with our SROs. We have two. We have one at the high school and the one we split between east and west. And then if we need one in an elementary school, they are available. We purchased software that we used for different programs, insurance for our technology, that kinda thing. And we also approved our district financial report, so we'll skip on down to that and go back up to our
Adopted the school hours, uh, policy.
Did. That allowed us.
How did that change?
It didn't change, but it has to be board-approved. Okay, in the state, you have to have one hundred sixty-nine instructional days as is now, and there's some legislation out there that that could change, but I'll talk to you about that later. One sixty-seven in the classroom, students in seats with the teacher, and we can count two uh, parent-teacher conference days. So you have to have one sixty-nine. Then you can also be approved for hours, one thousand eighty hours worth of instruction. That's what allowed us to be able to forgive the two snow days. We couldn't have done it if we were only a days. Now, do you remember the teacher walkout? Who could forget last year? Okay, so the reason that we didn't have to make up days is because we increased the length of our day by five or ten minutes, and that gave us that flexibility. Let's say you had a natural disaster. Uh, heaven forbid, um, you know, we could, we can increase our days and get in our requirements. So that was approved.
Policy changes, board policy.
Okay, this one was interesting, um. We had to add medical marijuana to our drug and alcohol policy because of the changes that have occurred in Oklahoma in regard to medical marijuana. And, um, basically, the policy says we cannot discriminate if an employee tests positive for marijuana, if they have a medical marijuana card. Now, we drug test all employees. If you work for this school, y- you have to be drug tested. We just cannot discriminate. And with the prominence of this, we thought we needed to update it as we're hiring employees, not wait till September when our typical uh, drug policies are. And what I, what I will tell you is there are certain positions. It doesn't matter if you have a medical marijuana card, you can't be employed, and that's a bus driver. Uh, some of our teaching positions, like if industrial arts wood chop, that kind of thing, science, when you're using chemicals. Now, nothing's changed as far as impairment. It cannot be on school property. Uh, you cannot be impaired by drugs, alcohol, or medical marijuana at any given time. But we we updated our policy to be in compliance with the medical marijuana.
Very good. Uh, executive session.
We did have an executive session and and that's when we can talk about employment and litigation and that kinda thing, so um, it ran, we can talk about negotiations. We are entering into negotiations with our teachers on July thirty-first. So that's, that's to come. So we'll know more about where we're going as far as monetary and any other changes to the contract, which I'm sure I'll update you.
Right, and the August, uh, board meeting, uh, will be here before you know it, and the start of school will be here. As, uh, Shelley Eret reminded us, we're still a little more than a month away from school starting, which less than a month away, less than a month away from school starting on August fourteenth. So as the days continue, and we get closer and closer to the first day of school, uh, what's in store for Ponca City Public Schools over the next month? Just more of the same?
We've gotta get our positions hired. We start, our principals start on August first, which is two weeks from tomorrow. So we're going to be planning, you know, we've set goals and we'll be brainstorming ideas and goals and and planning for our back-to-school assemblies. We're going to agree, we're gonna have a back-to-school assembly, and I don't wanna give the details. Um, still working on that culture and fo- fostering those relationships. We still have some hires to do. Uh, we have professional development. It's, it's not going to ease up any, and that's okay. That's how I like it.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, a big tip of the microphone to everyone who made possible some incredible changes in the district and all of the construction and the things like that, things we haven't talked about in this board wrap-up, but, uh, the the new entrance at at the the Pre-K Center, uh, that, uh, Ponca City Public Schools Concert Hall, second to none. If you haven't had a chance to attend an event at that facility, you're gonna be really surprised when you do. It is just top-notch, world-class.
I can't say enough about our community and the support. Our community wants our students to have every opportunity from stuff the bus to our bond elections. Something else that's an interesting piece of information, uh, I I heard on the news the other day that the average family spends over five hundred dollars just on school supplies. This year, we have drastically reduced our school supplies, uh, uh, list. Gone are the days with the lengthy list. Our pie partners, our partners in education, which are our businesses that partner with us, the stuff the bus. Our kids aren't gonna have to have many school supplies. We can get them for them, and 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 it's all of our kids. It doesn't matter if they can afford school supply, if the family can afford school supplies or not. Who can afford an extra five hundred dollars a month? Just none of us can, I mean, for school supplies. And, um, I'm I'm so proud of that for our community and the way people step up for bond elections. And we've talked a lot about our projects, but something that's going to be fabulous is all of our schools will have this, a lobby guard, a secure entrance, once the pre-K center's done. And unfortunately, that's a worry in this day and time, but our people have stepped up and our facilities are top-notch.
They are. That's so true.
I- i- it's, it's an honor to live and work in Ponca City for sure. And that's because our community wraps their arms around us and us around our community. I mean, we're all in this as a team.
Yeah, so true. It's Ponca City Public Schools, and really, the Wildcat Way. It goes, uh, throughout the entire district. Our thanks to Shelley Eret, superintendent of Ponca City Public Schools, and that is gonna do it for the July edition of the Board Wrap-Up Show. For Ponca City Public Schools, I'm your host, Sean Anderson. Until next time.